Ladies, you ready?
When you're ready.
Good morning, everyone. The Delaware County Commissioner meeting for November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four is now in session. Would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning again, everyone. I'm Gary Merrill. I'm president of the board this year. To my right is vice chair Barb Lewis, and to my left is fellow commissioner Jeff Benton. Of course, our administrator Tracy Davies and Don Houston, deputy administrator, and I almost said Randy, and Ally Jennifer with us today. Let's move forward.
Resolution number two four dash nine three two, in the matter of approving electronic record of proceedings for a regular meeting held November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two four dash nine three two. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment or anything not on the agenda today. Resolution number three, resolution number two four dash nine three three, in the matter of approving purchase orders on announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR one 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 five and memo transfers in batch number MT APR one 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 five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two four dash nine three three. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine three four, in the matter of a new liquor license request from Sexton's Pizza according to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objections and no requests for a hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two four dash nine three four. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine three five, in the matter of a new liquor license request from Liberty Premium Wine LLC according to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objection and no request for a hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two four dash nine three five. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine three six, in the matter of approving travel expense request.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two four dash nine three six. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine three seven, in the matter of approving a proclamation dedicating the Home Road Bridge over the O'Shaughnessy Reservoir in Delaware County.
I proudly make this motion. Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion we have with us our county engineer, Chris Bossman. Go ahead, Chris.
Good morning. I've been before your board a lot with some really exciting projects and some things that have been wonderful for the county, but I'm the happiest I've ever been in front of you to make this this suggestion that we name the Home Road Bridge in honor of former county engineer Fred Stoltz. There's three reasons why I think this is an important thing for us to do. One, I've witnessed firsthand Fred Stoltz as a community leader, as an elected official, and he commands the respect of so many of the people that we come in contact with regularly. Fred had the respect, still has the respect, of the development and building community. They appreciated the fact that Fred was always fair. Over and over, I heard people say Fred's really tough, but he's fair and he's tough on all of us. So, and they appreciate that. They, the community is a better place for Fred Stoltz having been here. He's done so much and been involved in so many things. I know, Jeff, you shared time on the Little Brown Jug Society with Fred for a long time. The the impact that he's had on people at our office is significant. I think there's only five or six of us still at the engineer's office that Fred hired or worked with, but Fred comes in our office regularly and everyone there knows Fred and appreciates Fred, and he's really still really interested in what we're doing. He's really invested, and he's just a champion for all things Delaware County, and he always has been. Fred's taught me a lot. At that time, I worked with him for seven years as his chief deputy. It's the best job I've ever had, and I learned so much from Fred. Jeff and I were joking as we walked in, one of the things Fred taught me as a reluctant politician, when I attended events with Fred, we could never sit still and eat our meal. We had to get up and work the room. I don't know if you saw Fred working the room before the meeting today, but he was in that same form and doing just the kind of thing that he tried to teach me to do. So, I'm appreciative of the impact that he's had on our county and on our community in that regard. Secondly, I think Fred needs to be recognized as a visionary. So much of what we do today still has Fred Stoltz fingerprints on it, and they're built on foundations that Fred Stoltz laid for us. Fred authored the first Delaware County Thoroughfare Plan, the Southern Delaware County Thoroughfare Plan, in the nineteen eighties. And if you have any question about his vision, projects that were included in that plan include Sawmill Parkway Extension, a Big Walnut Interchange, the extension of Home Road across twenty-three to connect up to Lewis Center Road that we'll complete here within the next two years. There was a project called the Zoo Loop, and the Zoo Loop was connecting State Route seven fifty with Lick Road and the bridge over at the dam in O'Shaughnessy Reservoir. If you can recall, seven fifty used to go out and dead end and tee into State Route two fifty-seven, and the concept of looping that to the south and lining up with Lick Road was a plan that Fred identified as something that needed to happen. So, we get credit when we open things and complete things, but there's an awful lot of credit that goes to Fred as still as somebody that's conceiving projects, that conceived projects that we're still working on. So, I think that's very noteworthy. I also wanted to mention Fred as a public servant. Not only did he spend twenty-seven years at the engineer's office, he spent eight years in the Army National Guard. He worked for seven years for the High Department of Transportation. So he has service in his blood and in his bones, and I've learned a lot from that. Finally, I want to talk specifically about the Home Road Bridge and why it's important for that bridge to bear his name from this day on. The the bridge that's there now is probably our most picturesque, noteworthy bridge. There's a lot of, I see a lot of those pictures of that structure show up in a lot of other places that didn't originate here in the county. But Fred, that bridge is there and is as iconic as it is because of action that Fred took years in, just a few years into his service as county engineer. And Fred negotiated the agreement with the city of Columbus that that said that the city of Columbus had to pay for the bridge beyond the length of the original bridge that was there before the O'Shaughnessy Reservoir was built. We had about a two hundred and forty-foot bridge before O'Shaughnessy Reservoir, and the bridge that Columbus built with the reservoir was over eleven hundred feet long. And we inherited that. Fred always thought that was wrong and shouldn't have happened and that we shouldn't be responsible for that. So, he made that happen. He got Columbus to the table and negotiated a deal that the bridge that bears his name will is there because of that deal that he cut. We were able to build that bridge. Otherwise, the funding at that time would not have been available. So, it's really important in fitting that Fred's name will be on that bridge, and I'm proud to suggest that to you. One benefit of that is Fred and Nancy live less than two miles away from that bridge and drive across it regularly. How great is it to get a drive across a bridge with your name on it? So, lastly, I'm excited about that because after Fred's name goes on the bridge, he's going to be responsible for maintaining the bridge. We've got a concrete wall that needs some paint, and winter's coming. There's snow and ice, and so I'm glad he's willing to do that. Can you put that? So here's the, here's the bridge that will bear Fred's name, and when Fred comes up, then we can pull the next picture up. That's really all I have. Is there any questions for me that your board has?
I don't think I have any questions for you. You're not the star today.
I'm not. I don't want to be. I would just, before I sit down, just remind everyone, we'll meet at three o'clock this afternoon to actually unveil the signs that are up on the bridge.
I'm going to, I think the order of things we're going to do here is, I'm going to ask anyone in the audience who wants to say anything before Fred, we'll give Fred his opportunity, but we'll be a little bit here. One thing I've always observed and noticed says a lot about a person when people come to events like this, and the number of people in this room says it all. You're here because of your support and your love for Fred, and that says a lot. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in behalf of this event? Now, yes, come on, now somebody here plan to speak. Are we bashful?
I didn't plan to do this.
You'll need to come up front and introduce yourself, and otherwise we won't be able to hear you.
My name is Rick Newsome, and I've had the privilege of being a pastor in Delaware County at Grace Church in Powell. And one of the exciting things that fits all of this that I didn't know I was going to get to share, but Fred benefited us in engineering our first building. And not only was it a blessing, but he was very precise in what he did, and we talk about, we're only about a quarter inch off in that area. He and Nancy have served us well in this community, and many of our men who are elders are here to support, and we thank you for recognizing him, and what a privilege to be a part of this this morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, then I'm going to, I'm going to make a couple of comments, and I'm going to turn over my fellow commissioners, and then Fred will review an opportunity to speak. I just want to say, I was thinking about, I've been the commissioner for twelve years. I think two electors that I can recall that we've done something for, John Peterson and Judge Shaw, who stood right here and spoke for forty-five minutes. I don't know if you're going to speak for forty-five minutes. Now, we got Judge Shaw here without him knowing about it. I think he knew about it, but so it's special when we identify an elected official. You're in good company with John Peterson and Judge Shaw, and I think that in my tenure here, I think you're the only three that we will have done something like this for. And it's an honor to be here today to acknowledge you and the naming of this bridge. And with that, I'm going to turn over my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Lewis?
Well, as often happens, when another commissioner speaks first, they take some of what you were, what I was going to say. And I just look at everyone here, and I think, just as Commissioner Merrill said, you're here because you are here to honor a great man. And the fact that you came out today and that you'll be out on the bridge, many of you, at three P M. today speaks volumes. And I always, always, and I wasn't around when Fred served, but I've met him several times since, and it's just always a pleasure, Fred, to talk with you, and it's so easy to talk with you, and you're just a wonderful, wonderful man. And I'm so honored to be able to vote on this resolution honoring you today, and it is so appropriate because without you, this never would have happened. So, thank you, and I thank Nancy too, and that's, it's great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, just maybe a couple of things to add since Chris so eloquently covered most of what I was going to mention. Chris probably, a little humbly, didn't mention that honestly Delaware County has the best roads and bridge system in the state. I mean, easily. I don't think there's any doubt about that. And that's because, oh gosh, fifty-plus years ago, you know, Fred took over that office and embarked on a journey to lead us to where we are. You know, again, we've got the best road and bridge system in the state and great plans for the future. And it's well-funded, it's well-thought-out, it fits well with the county's other plans, whether it's economic development or sewers or, you know, the growth for the county. Again, it's just a very well-thought-out, well-executed plan. And again, Fred started that and ran it for twenty-seven years and created a beautiful foundation, and Chris has continued it for twenty-plus years since then, and almost thirty years now, Chris, isn't it? And we are so proud and so fortunate, you know, when we talk about Delaware County to our peers or in the community. You know, we know we have the best road and bridge system in the state, and there's a whole bunch of really neat projects in the pipeline, you know, that'll just allow us to continue to be, you know, the best county in the state in so many ways. But secondly, I also wanted to acknowledge that we miss Fred at the Little Brown Jug Society board meetings. I know you were there for a lot of years, and Fred and I would usually sit next to each other and just chat about things. And Fred really understood, you know, how important something like the Little Brown Jug is to Delaware County and really supported it with those insights and board meetings and so on. So, anyway, again, it's really fun that we're able to pause and honor Fred and do something special like naming a, probably again, the most beautiful bridge in the county, maybe in the state, after such a distinguished leader. Look forward to the three P M. dedication, and in the meantime, we'll turn it over and read the resolution.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we'll vote on it, and Fred, then you'll have an opportunity to share your thoughts with us. Whereas Fred Stoltz was born in Union County, Ohio, in nineteen thirty-six, he graduated from Souda Valley High School in nineteen fifty-four and earned his undergraduate civil engineering degree from Tri-State University in nineteen sixty-four. And whereas Fred began serving the citizens of Delaware County, Ohio, as county engineer in January nineteen sixty-nine, he served twenty-seven years in this capacity until his retirement in February nineteen ninety-six. His career also included seven years of public service with the Ohio Department of Transportation. And whereas Fred's passion for Delaware County and for public service distinguishes him as an essential member of our community, many of the policies and standards that he adopted during his tenure as county engineer still serve us in the Foundation for Ongoing Responsible Development of Transportation Infrastructure in our growing county. And whereas Fred Stoltz and his wife Nancy are longtime residents of Concord Township, where they raised their two sons, they still reside less than two miles from the Home Road Bridge over the Souda River, which is going to make it convenient for them when it comes to work on the bridge, because it'll be close. And whereas Fred's vision and diligence led to an intergovernmental agreement between Delaware County and the city of Columbus that secured the necessary funding for the twenty oh-three Home Road Bridge replacement. And whereas in honor of Fred Stoltz and his compassion and dedicated leadership in public service, the commissioners desire to rename the Home Road Bridge over the Souda River as the Fred L. Stoltz Bridge. And whereas the commissioners desire to purchase and display a bronze plaque recognizing former Delaware County engineer Fred Stoltz for his public service and to officially dedicate the bridge to be the Fred L. Stoltz Bridge. Now therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby approves naming the Home Road Bridge over the Souda River in honor of Fred, and to celebrate his public service to the citizens of Delaware County and the state of Ohio, approves the placement of a bronze plaque on the bridge in his honor, signed by Commissioner Barb Lewis, Commissioner Jeff Benton, and Commissioner Gary Merrill. With that, I call for a vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine three seven. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye. With that, Fred, would you like to share your thoughts with us?
It's my turn?
Yeah, it's your turn.
Well, I feel a bit overwhelmed here this morning, but I wonder, I'd like to bring my wife up. At eighty-eight years old, my hearing isn't really very good, but I always hear her. And when she says jump, I say, how high?
Nancy, would you like to join?
And my wife Nancy. Well.
She also gives you orders, too.
The problem that I have, you know, is with, if I receive questions, I probably won't be able to understand.
Well, we'll have her come up at that point if there's any questions.
Well, anyway, I think the Lord prepared me for the job of county engineer right from the beginning because I was born and raised on a farm, and I even farmed myself for a few years before I was married. But so therefore, I understood the problems that the farmers had. And in nineteen ninety-six, or nineteen sixty-nine, yeah, when I first took office, the official population of Delaware County was forty-nine thousand. And of course, most of those rural people were farmers, and some of the major problems that they were beginning to have was being able to get their farm equipment through the bridges, through the culverts and whatnot. So I put together a pretty good team, I think, of people, and I hesitate to mention the names, but in the same token, I'm going to mention a few. I just hope that no one is offended if I forget to mention your name. But anyway, my county road superintendent was Charles Adams, and he lived just outside of Delaware on a little farm. And Nelson Davenport was his deputy, superintendent of roads. And then I really didn't have a deputy at that time, but I had good people. John Burns helped design bridges and culverts, and Jack Jennings was my first higher A, and he handled the deed description approvals. And I might mention that the deed, well, the office, my office, was located where your mechanical room is now downstairs, just inside the door on the south. But and we, you know, the major part of that area was approving deeds. And I had the opportunity to give a couple of my employees some schooling on being a surveyor because they were going to be approving deeds that is brought in by, that had been surveyed, and the reason we needed approvals was because of adequate descriptions. And fortunately, two of those fellows that I was able to train a little bit eventually passed their surveyor's exam, and so that helped a bit. But anyway, I had excellent help, and I just enjoyed the process and enjoyed the people and the farmers and whatnot. And a few years later, I moved the office over to Fifty Channing Street, which is now out in the county here a little bit. But anyway, I know that well, my, I hired this fella here. He's been a super, super guy, and I love him like a brother. But anyway, I just, I thank each one of you for this honor that you've bestowed upon me, and I just appreciate it, but it is a bit overwhelming. I just never expected anything like this. But anyway, I'm open to questions if you might have.
Fred, I just want to say, it's a, it's a pleasure.
Well, the one day I was sitting in the office and I received a call from Richard Jackson. And Richard Jackson, both Nancy and I had known him at the original Highway Department, and he had worked in the same areas for, in the design area where Nancy was the secretary. But anyway, Richard asked me the question. He said, Fred? He said, Fred, the city of Columbus needs to construct a raw water line from Allen Creek to Hoover, and we need your approval. Would you be willing to give me approval? And I very quickly thought of the Home Road Bridge, and I said, yes, if you can, if we can develop a contract between the city or an agreement that the city would help in the expenses of Home Road Bridge, which is, at that time, it was twelve feet wide and a thousand and forty-six feet long. It had replaced a bridge that was two hundred feet long and was only about twenty years old. And he said, well, if you'd work up a contract or an agreement, he said, I think I can accept that and we'll go proceed. And that's what happened. That's how that bridge became funded. With that, plus the, you know, the picture that Chris has that shows both the thousand and forty-two-foot bridge and the small two-hundred-foot bridge in the same photo is what really, I hope it is preserved because I think in any court or any good-minded people could agree that the water requirements of the city of Columbus and, you know, which necessitated the Olentanshee Dam, which made it necessary for a thousand and forty-two-foot bridge. So, that's how that happened, and I was pleased to give him the approval to build his raw water line.
Well, I just want to Fred, I just want to say, your negotiating skills back in those days is Fred, I just want to say, your negotiating skills back in those days is is to be admired and respected. Because that you helped advance that bridge, and it wasn't all in our dime. Chris Bossman is doing the same thing since he took over and many, many times. And so he he learned well from you. So I really appreciate everything you said. I don't know. Does anyone have any questions? Nancy, do you have anything you want to say?
I don't think so. The old bridge did have quite a reputation for stealing side mirrors on cars.
Yes, it was very different being twelve feet wide, you know. The traffic that it had grown to be, it was just totally not very good. But anyway, the bridge that was built and with your gentleman's approval and whatnot, I just praise praise the Lord for you.
Fred, thank you for everything you've done. I think you deserve a standing ovation. And let's get a photo. So Nancy, would you should join us and Chris and Rob and anyone else who thinks appropriate?
And thank you all for being here.
Let's get ten.
Okay, item number eight. Resolution number two four dash nine three eight in the matter of approving a transfer of appropriations for the Public Defender's Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second in discussion.
I guess nobody wants to hear my point. Ask to move money around. It's not as exciting, I guess. We submitted our twenty twenty.
You need to introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carlos Crawford, Delaware County Public Defender. We submitted our twenty twenty-five budget with the inclusion of one new attorney and one new administrative professional. We think with those additions that we are set for the next five years at least, maybe ten. We do expect, hopefully, that we, for twenty twenty-six, that our budget request is even less than it is. And it was in twenty twenty-five as we continue to reduce the amount of court appointed cases that typically cost about double per case than we would have handling that in-house. We actually probably would have been at a reduced budget for twenty twenty-five. But for the unfortunate string of murders that have been happening, some in the Columbus portions, but around the county. But based on that, we are happy to report that we handled about half of those. We had a trial two weeks ago on one that was an aggravated murder. And I suspect that probably would have cost the county about fifty thousand dollars in court appointed fees. So for one of about seventy percent of one of the attorney's salary, we were able to get one case. So I mean, that shows the value of each individual alone there. That being said, we, because we did not need to ask for new money, the Public Defender Commission approved me hiring those two individuals in the last two months of this year. And we are just asking to transfer money from these other object codes into the salary and opers sections of from from fifty-three oh one, which is partly contracted professional services. Reimbursements, which is money that we send to the Ohio Public Defender's Office. We are over in that number. And so all of it essentially is coming from that fifty-five thirty category up into salary. So we are not asking for any money or appropriations. We have the and had the funding also to buy their laptops and everything else we needed. We just need to move that money for salary for the end of this year.
Any questions or comments?
Well, yes. I mean, this is very unusual. Usually, we're we're asked for money. You run the office so well, Carlos.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're just doing such a great job. So when when do you move into your new?
I walked through Wednesday, and it's coming along. I think they should be done in two weeks. There was an issue with paving the lot. I don't know if you guys were aware of that. It was supposed to be paved today.
Oh, okay.
I guess rain last week put the asphalt crew behind. So that should happen in the next week. I think the building should be done certainly the first week of December. But we're just, I think we're just waiting on furniture for the most part.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, it looks like we'll have an empty building with no furniture, so.
Oh, yes, yes.
You know, we do a lot of, you look back at the things that this board has done. I placed one of probably the top two or three, the Public Defender Commission that we set up. You've done, you have done a tremendous job and your staff and has done a tremendous job to the benefit of everyone in this county. And you've done it in a very efficient way, which I won't go down that road, but let's leave it alone. But I, we're very fortunate to have some people of your quality in that office and and move move to the new location. We all expect a tour once you get it done.
Yes.
Because I I know I'm looking forward to seeing the finished product, and I'm sure the others are as well. We're very fortunate. Thank you very much. And Mr. Ben, do you have anything to add?
Not nothing really much. Again, thanks for all you do. And I really appreciate that you keep a real good eye on the county's finances and the taxpayer dollars and make sure that they're spent wisely. And we support this and the future plans. So thank you.
Thank you. And we will have an open house once the furniture arrives for the judges and other elected officials. So we're excited. Just hopefully the furniture arrives before January, so.
Just just one more thing. When I was meeting with Prosecutor Schiffel, she just commented, oh, boy, do I do I love working with Carlos. And when when you have a a great public defender such as yourself working with a wonderful prosecutor, I mean, the justice is is truly served. So thank you, Carlos.
Thank you. We won our last couple jury trials, so I wasn't sure if she was upset or would say bad.
In theory, it's an adversarial relationship between you and the prosecutor. But the reality is, the goal is to get a good result.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we all win if we get a good result. And I think everyone understands that and appreciates that we're getting, that's exactly what we're doing in our county.
Yeah, and and we're here to just fight for people's rights. That's what I tell people all the time. I'm not here to help people commit crimes. People have constitutional rights, and we just want to protect those.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Call for vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine three eight. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you, Carlos.
Resolution number two four dash nine three nine in the matter of approving a transfer of appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second in discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners Don Houston, Deputy Administrator. And I'm recommending that we transfer two thousand dollars from our safety budget in the materials or to the materials and supplies line item from services and charges. This would allow us to purchase AEDs for two locations in the county and then also purchase additional first aid kits that are needed.
Any questions or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine three nine. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine four zero in the matter of accepting the roads, approving recommended speed limits, establishing stop conditions, and releasing the maintenance bonds for Mulberry Estates and Oaks at Big Walnut.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second in discussion.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners Lee Bodnar with the Engineers' Office. The Mulberry Estates is a fourteen point oh three acre site located off of Big Walnut Road and South Old Three Seas Highway in Genoa Township. This resolution accepts the new roadways, approves the speed limits, and establishes the stop conditions at the appropriate intersections. The site has been inspected and by all necessary and required agencies, and we would recommend your approval.
Any questions or comments? Call for vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine four one. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine four two in the matter of approving the Plattsup subdivision for the Districtship Brookshire Hyatt Plaza subdivision revised, Betfish CAD subdivision, Dream Weaver Alive CAD, and North Star Ivy Woods Section One.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second in discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, for your consideration, the district of Brookshire is a twenty-five acre site. It's a multi-family site located off of Wilson Road west of South Galena Road in Brookshire Township. Hyatt Plaza subdivision is a three point two five acre site located at the northwest corner of Hyatt's Road and Columbus Pike Road in Berlin Township. Betfish Common Access Drive is a thirteen point five six acre site located east off of Hogback Road just north of Howard Road in Brown Township. Dream Weaver Alive Common Access Drive is a seven point twenty-two acre site located off of Ford Road west of Sawmill Parkway in Liberty Township. And finally, North Star Ivy Woods Section One is a seventy lot, single-family site located north off of Wilson Road just west of North Galena Road in Brookshire Township. All these Platts have been reviewed by the necessary and required agencies, and we would request, we would recommend your approval.
Any questions or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine four two. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine four three in the matter of approving the drainage maintenance petition and the ditch maintenance assessment for Summer Crest Drive subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second in discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, again for your consideration, the Summer Crest Drive subdivision is a seventeen point eight five acre site located off of Summer Ridge Road, East of Africa Road in Berlin Township. This petition has been submitted by one hundred percent of the property owners, and we would recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine four three. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine four four in the matter of approving the amended ditch maintenance petition and the ditch maintenance assessment for Berlin Farms West.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second in discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, originally, this ditch maintenance petition and ditch maintenance assessment for this site was approved in two thousand twenty-three. The petitioner has subsequently changed the number of lots in several of the sections of that subdivision, with the overall number of lots within the subdivision remaining exactly the same. So there was just some moving around of lots within the sections. The number of lots, again, remains the same as the prior approved petition. And the this resolution amends that prior petition. The site is located north off of Berlin Station Road, west of Pyatt Road in Berlin Township. And this petition was submitted by a hundred percent of the property owners. And after review and inspection, we would we would recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine four four. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine four five in the matter of approving the drainage maintenance petition and the ditch maintenance assessment for North Star Ivy Wood.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second in discussion.
For your consideration, Commissioners, the North Star Ivy Wood is a sixty-three point eight seven acre site located north off of Wilson Road just west of North Galena Road in Brookshire Township. This petition was submitted by a hundred percent of the property owners, and again, we would recommend your approval.
Question or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine four five. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine four six in the matter of approving the owners' agreements for North Star Ivy Woods Section One and North Star Ivy Woods Section Two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second in discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, for your consideration, this is a standard owners' agreement for the improvement construction for the both these development sites, which are located off of Wilson Road in Brookshire Township. We would recommend your approval.
Call for vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine four six. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine four seven in the matter of approving right-of-way work permit summary sheet.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second in discussion.
This is for eleven standard utility right-of-way permits with nothing remarkable to share.
Questions or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine four seven. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine four eight in the matter of approving amendment number three to the Professional Services Agreement with DLZ Ohio Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, Commissioners, for your consideration, this resolution is amending a prior approved agreement with DLZ Ohio to update the rates for supplying us with various inspections and testing services, of which they are professionals, and we would recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Call for vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine four eight. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine four nine in the matter of approving plan, specifications, estimate, and setting a bid date for the project known as DLZ R one two five dash one point four six Stites Road improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second in discussion.
For your consideration, Commissioners, this resolution. For your consideration, Commissioners, this resolution approves the plans, specifications, and sets the bid date for ten o'clock on December tenth for over one mile of widening, resurfacing, and drainage improvements. Uh, though Stites Road will still remain two lanes, it will be widened somewhat to, to help transportation and to help travel. It's scheduled to begin in July of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, this project area is located between Home Road and Hyatt Road in, uh, Hyatt's Road in Liberty Township. And we would recommend your approval to move forward.
Questions or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine four nine. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash nine five zero, in the matter of adopting a resolution declaring a necessity and the intent of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners to appropriate property.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Yes, finally, Commissioners, for your consideration, this is a proposed roundabout at the intersection of Big Walnut Road and Tussock Street Road. Uh, as we have been unable thus far to reach an agreement with the property owner, this resolution allows us to move forward with the project as we still continue negotiating the value of that property with the owner, and we would recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine five zero. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Resolution number two four dash nine five one, in the matter of approving an online subscription and service agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Procore Technologies.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Morning Commissioners, Tiffany Magg, Director of Environmental Services. So this is our construction management documentation software that we use for all of our projects, both capital and residential. Uh, we use it for essentially all construction record document keeping and tracking, um, used by our internal staff, external consultants, as well as contractors. Uh, we'll spend a little under fifty thousand dollars this year and next year, and that's based on the total project price tag that we have on our, our capital projects are basically the major bulk of the, the cost for this. So that would be O E C C, package plans, um, finishing up the Allen Creek project as well as the North Star project. Uh, so we recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Call for vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine five one. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye. Thanks. Thank you.
And that brings us to administrative report.
Nothing today, thank you.
Commissioner Benton?
Uh, just a couple of things. We had COYC Central Youth Center meeting last, um, Thursday, and, uh, that went fine. Uh, we had our, the EMS Winter Conference was Friday. And that was very well attended, very interesting. I went for a little bit and heard a couple of speakers. And, uh, again, they, they continued to do a great job. They, they, this is part of their training to bring in, you know, have this conference, bring in experts in various fields. These are national experts that Jeff Fischel, the director, brings in. Very well attended, very attentive, uh, and good, good topics and way over my head in terms of what they were talking about. But, but it was very interesting, very well done.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, I, I just want to congratulate, uh, Director Fischel and, uh, for putting on and, and his, and, uh, and, and all of the staff who assisted for the winter conference. I, I, I looked at the program and, uh, it, uh, it, it was, I'm certain, it, it was at a very high level and, but the topics covered were-
But it wasn't over your head, like-
Oh, well, I, I won't comment on that, but.
It's a, it's a complicated field.
Yeah, they got some, they had some great speakers.
Very good speaker.
Yeah, so, that's all.
Well, uh, tomorrow I'm going to get a tour of the preservation parks. I've had one about four or five years ago, so I'll do that in the morning. And I'm speaking at the Delaware County Board of Realtors after that, so I'll have a visit day tomorrow. And with that, I believe we have a need for executive session.
We do. Resolution number two four dash nine five two, in the matter of journeying into executive session for consideration of employment and compensation of a public employer, public official.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash nine five two. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.